Dennis, can you hear us? Are you on the phone or some other different sort of device? There he is. Howdy, Dennis.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome. Okay, well, it looks like we're all here. So I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission's regular meeting of May 2nd, 2022. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. When the public hearing for that item is opened, a speaker may accept up to five additional minutes from others, one minute from each speaker that defers time for maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, do we still have a slide to show there? I should probably ask for that sooner in the process. There we go. So there's the raise hand button. You can also call in on the phone. Okay, may I have a roll call, please? Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At that screen, click.
You're muted, Mark.
Here, sorry about that.
Okay, Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chair Hill.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And may we have an approval of the agenda, please?
Move that we approve the agenda as staff recommends with item four A, continue to a data uncertain.
I'll second it.
We've got a second there. No other comments. Let's vote on that, please. Roll call.
As a point of clarification, I wasn't seeing video at that moment. Could you tell me who was the second on that?
Jeff Jennings.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Button?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us right on to item two A, written in oral communication for the public on matters concerning matters which are not on the agenda but for which the planning commission has subject matter jurisdiction. Rebecca, do how many do we have people? How many?
We do have a couple of people who have signed up to speak today.
Okay.
And just as a formality, the agenda for the meeting was properly posted on April 22nd, 2022.
I'm sorry I skipped that. I'm so eager to get ahead.
No worries. So Alex Stein is our first speaker.
Okay, welcome, Mr. I'm assuming Mr. Mr. Stein, Alex, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, guys, hey, you know, I really appreciate the planning commission convening tonight because we need to do more. Hunter Biden has recently moved to Malibu and him and I become friends. Him and I have ended up hanging out a little bit. And let me tell you something, there's a lot of disinformation going around. And luckily, there's a Ministry of Information Disinformation coming out that's going to be able to stop this. But listen, I'll be honest. So his granddaughter Navy, Joe Biden won't even come to Malibu because he doesn't have enough privacy here. So we need to do something in Malibu. So Joe Biden will come acknowledge his granddaughter. And listen, Hunter Biden is not on methamphetamines. If anything, we do a little bit of cocaine and we drink a little bit. That's not that big a deal. The problem is that we're having those that we cannot get anybody from the White House to come to Malibu because they don't want to acknowledge his granddaughter because the people in Malibu are such nuts, you know, they don't have enough privacy. So if we could do something, if we could have some sort of way, we could block off Hunter Street, then we would then the Secret Service wouldn't be responsible. Because let me tell you something, this Uber Eats driver came in. He saw me doing some disgusting stuff with this Filipino prostitute. And I would like the Secret Service didn't care like they didn't care. They didn't care. Yes, yes, yes.
Good question. How is this within the subject matter jurisdiction of the?
Well, because the planning commission, what happens is I don't want Uber Eats drivers coming into the house while I'm doing stuff with the prostitute and smoking crack with Hunter Biden. So if the planning commission could actually block down the street, then I could smoke crack with Hunter Biden and we can hang out with these prostitutes and I wouldn't have to worry about this. But now I'm stressed out because I'm ordering Grubhub. And now I got some, you know, guy that's going to catch me with a Filipino prostitute. And Lord have mercy, could you imagine if Hunter Biden, all that disinformation, that laptop was totally fake? We know that's Russian disinformation. But you have all these weirdos that want to take pictures, these paparazzi types. If you guys would help out Hunter and I, we would be able to hang out with these Filipino prostitutes and have a lot more fun. But we're always worried about getting caught by the paparazzi. So I'm just thinking if we could put something on the agenda for the next meeting in the planning commission where we could actually block off the street and we could protect Hunter and we could actually make it more convenient for Joe Biden, our president, the best president ever, who's making things in our country so good. It could make it more able, it would be more able for him to come see his granddaughter Navy Roberts. Because, listen, Joe Biden won't even put in the Christmas card, they didn't even put Navy Roberts, his six granddaughter in the picture. And why? Because paparazzi are able to come to Malibu and they're able to exploit them. Like you should have saw what happened in West Hollywood. There are so many children at the art gallery. And then we tried to bring the children back to Malibu and the paparazzi were following us the whole entire way. So if we could just get the planning commission to somehow lock down Hunter Street and then we wouldn't have to worry because these Secret Service, they can't, they can't stop anything. They let the Uber Eats drivers come in all the time. And let me just tell you something, what I'm doing with these prostitutes is 100% legal. I'm paying for them. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't stiff them and we have plenty of money. And so I just want you guys to help support it because this is what this is doing is it's really kind of putting a stain on Malibu. Because if you look at guys like Hunter Biden, he's a class individual. He's he's an upstanding. Joe Biden even said he's the smartest individual that he personally knows. But yet we're always worried. We're always worried about some sort of paparazzi. So we need to protect the special citizens.
Very creative, Mr. Stein. Unfortunately, we don't have anything that we, the commission can do about that. So please do your homework next time and you're welcome whenever. Next speaker, please.
Do we have a Terry Renders in the meeting?
Okay, go ahead. Terry, can you hear us? Can we hear you? Are you there?
I actually, I was to speak on the continued item. So I'm ceding my time.
On the continued item.
Yeah, for a six three three.
Well.
C star.
We're not hearing that item tonight. So either you.
No, I'm ceding my time.
Yeah, he's.
I see. Okay, okay.
And then if there are any other people present in the meeting who wish to speak at this time, please indicate so by using the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none.
And seeing none. Okay, well, in that case, then let's move on to item two B, planning commission and staff comments and inquiries. Planning commissioners. Who's got something on their mind? Jeff?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to clarify the live meeting, Zoom meeting situation. I take it that now that the city council is going back to Zoom meetings, that our next meeting will in fact be Zoom. And you feel, I mean, Richard can respond to that after I'm done. But the other thing I was thinking of, I was looking, you know, I was remembering the live meetings that we did have and.
Sorry, Commissioner Jennings, Commissioner Mazza, you can't be on the phone during the the meeting.
Okay, I was just thinking about the live meetings that we had and how in some cases where there was a controversial project, people would be have to bring down their their landscapers, their architects, their engineers, this and that, and the other thing. I was looking at one of the projects we have tonight is the landscapers offices in London. And you know, I, the point I'm trying to make is that when we do go back into live meetings, I think it would really be economical move to come up with some way that would allow us to have a live meeting, but at the same time, allow the applicants, experts to somehow appear by Zoom. And actually, if a staff could appear by Zoom, I think it would save the city a lot of time and effort and money. So that's just my suggestion. That's it.
Anybody have a direct comment on that? John, is this a new, something different? Or you want to reply to Jeff? You're muted.
Both.
Okay, because I'd like to address what Jeff said too, but go ahead, John.
Okay, first, I'd like somebody to explain. Apparently, there's a period of time where we're going to have live meetings and it's going back to Zoom. And is our next meeting live? That's one question. And second, I've been watching city council meetings in another city that are hybrid, where the staff is there. Anybody who wants to speak can cut down and speak so you can see him on TV. And they have those speakers first, and then they close that session down and open the Zoom comments. And it works really well. Zooms through the meeting. Makes everybody happy. So it's a volunteer type thing. Last thing I want to say is if Alex Stein wants to come back after November, we'll figure out some way to appoint him to the planning commission. What he has to do is move in with Hunter Biden.
Mark, did you had a comment on the Zoom question?
You know, it seems like it's pretty much been covered. I have to concur with Commissioner Jennings, though, about, you know, the efficiency of the meetings, if we can have applicants and their, you know, design team and build team and all that stuff appear by Zoom. I think that's a great idea. So that that's all I have.
And I'll add that at the council meeting, they asked staff, both Stephen Clary and Kelsey in particular, what it would take to get a hybrid thing going. And Kelsey responded that she thought she could work it out and do the homework and get everything up and running within about a month. So I felt like the council sort of missed a trick there. It was the end of the night and it was late and I think they were ready to go home. But they could have said, okay, great, we're going to go back to this live meeting. And then by the time we're ready to come back to the Zoom again, maybe we'll be ready to actually be doing the hybrid by then. So hopefully at their next meeting, they'll pick that up and say, yeah, let's put in the order to get the hybrid in motion. John?
Yeah, can you tell us, is our next meeting in person?
My understanding was that it was supposed to be in person and I, because notices had already been set up. Is that correct, Trevor?
Yeah, Richard, if you want to confirm, but I believe our next commission meeting will be in person because the notices were sent out indicating the meeting would be in person. And then it'll be going back to Zoom after that.
Yes, that is correct. So I hope, I want to say this as best I can, so we don't have any confusion because I know it is a confusing subject. But next Monday's city council meeting and your next planning commission meeting, those two meetings will be in person. At this time, there's no opportunity for folks to call in or zoom in. They are both in-person meetings. And then after that meeting, after your first meeting in person, we go right back to Zoom again. And Chair Hill is correct in the sense that staff did provide some information about the hybrid aspect. But the city council's direction was that we would just stick with the Zoom platform and no call-ins. No call-ins for our next in-person meeting, and then we would just return to a Zoom platform until they change it. I hope I was clear enough on that. I just want to be very clear for the public that next meeting on the 16th of May, we'll all be seeing each other in the council chambers.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioner comments? Dennis?
Yes, good evening. This is kind of for, I guess, everybody in the building, but really probably Richard, Director Malika. I've been thinking about this. We've got two days that we're open for counter hours. Eight to 12, I guess, seven, 7:30 to 12. I was thinking, we need one afternoon session in there at least one day a week, two to five. I know we're short on staff, we're short on people, but if we're going to be in the building and we're supposed to be open and working, to me, we got to figure out a way to do that. I think that it would help the public. You know, we only have a couple of things on here tonight and people are just dying to get to us. But I think an afternoon session would probably help a lot of people and help keep things moving along. And you know, with with us only having a couple tonight, maybe we can get a couple more coming to us or so we can get people out in front and get things going. So anyway, that's a that's that's a thought that I really like people to consider. Also, now that we have the city manager, hopefully, and this is probably more towards the planning department, we can, if there are public people that are public, that's taken up Director Malika's time and too much of staff's time with whatever, with visits, with things that they want, feel like they are allowed to get and take. Hopefully, our director can go right to the city manager and stop all this. Because it's obvious that there's a lot of time being spent that doesn't need to be spent. I mean, this, this came up with with Councilman Yuri, I think back when he was either on the commission or first time the council and about taking up staff time and just coming into office and and whatever, we're allowed to do that. I got that. But I think there's an overabundance of flooding of emails and other stuff from the community and it takes a lot of staff time. And, you know, this is why, one of the reasons we're behind on top of not having anybody. And the guy that just spoke, Mr. Stein. Well, I guess with everybody's feeling about going back, you know, to Zoom or whatever, to me, that's the exact reason why I want live meetings. So I I'm one, after sitting in that front row for 10 and a half years and making the effort to go, there's a couple of gentlemen that I'm sitting with on this commission that have done the same. They went on every, well, when I first started going, it was Monday nights, Commissioner Mazza asked us to go to Tuesday, that have done the same. But I understand this is kind of the way things are now. But I I'm, I'm a big proponent of having it live. It really makes if people are really interested in what we do, then that they'll come down and participate. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dennis. Trevor, on that note, I know Bruce raised the point in the last council meeting about if we had a live meeting where anybody could come, could we then restrict access to call-ins to, you know, residents or some limited group? Has that been vetted yet? Or is there answer on that?
Yeah, no, we have a, anyone can come and participate at our public meetings. We can't have it only for residents only. That wouldn't be.
No, no, for the for the lot, if we had that, that anybody and everybody can come to the live meeting, then could the call-in option be limited to? Then could the call-in option be limited to a subset?
I do not believe that would be allowed.
Okay, because he raised that question. I just wondered if somebody had had an answer. Okay, I I guess my one question is, I I learned today that for the upcoming special meeting regarding the school. It's literally the one day out of many weeks that I'm not available. And is it, is it really Rebecca said, well, you know, it really looks like the only day that we could do it. So. It just sounds unfortunate, but it just seems like really that's really the only day that it could ever happen. Maybe I have a comment on that, Richard.
I'd be glad to. We we've kind of have been doing our best to. Try to work with the school district. I'm not saying that we're meeting their expectations. If we were meeting their expectations, I think they'd have a permit in hand already. But there, I've been working with trying to communicate this to the council too, to gain some insight there as well. On this, but the school district. Has a highly aggressive time schedule. And they are stating that due to rising construction costs and just logistics with students and all that. They they really need the city to have this item heard. By the the June hearing with our city council so that it could be referred up to the coastal commission. So the problem is that, one, we are still actually wrapping up our review. And the the next issue that runs into is trying to schedule this. So we could have, you know, meet the twenty-one day notice, have enough materials for the notice and get a hearing. And we've. Held back on the notice until today. That's because today is when we had all the. Report together, so we know what pieces. And if we were to go any day past, and Rebecca can confirm this, but I believe by pushing it any day past, it would mean that we'd have to. Put, give the city council a report before the planning commission had a chance to make a recommendation. Because I did look at some dates in early June, but that would have involved us. Having to basically give city council information. Before the the planning commission had a chance to opine on this. The prospective schedule is the thirty-first. At the planning commission, followed by a potential hearing with the city council on the thirteenth of June. But that, of course, is very tentative because if this body on the thirty-first. Asks for more time, more additional information or whichever, it it will not be going to the planning commission on the thirteenth.
Okay, John, are you, your hand is up. Is that on this point?
Yes, I, Richard, I assume you meant the city council on the thirteenth.
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner Maza, the city council.
Well, I I participated in the last round. Of the school districts permit. And it's. It's a very complicated, large project with lots of elements. And I would, you know, quite frankly, I'd hope it'd be a hope a public session because. I know for one, after the last, when we had the last meeting, it was hours and hours and hours and. This walkway and that walkway and this light and that light and. Very hard to do that unless you give us every single plan there is and have every expert hanging there. And as I remember, we got told, oh gee, you have to pass this because our plans will expire in two weeks. And if you don't pass it the way it is, you're bad guys. And. It sounds like that's what we're lined up for again. And I'm not. I for one, want to want to make sure this one's done right. We've got neighbors. There, they're already complaining to me and they don't even know what the plans are. So. And then, by the way, we have to apparently pass a bond issue to build the school. So I hope we go. At our pace rather than their pace and do it right. Because this is a hundred and sixty million dollar deal. And I don't feel like doing it in two hours with with neighbors screaming at us and not knowing exactly what's going on. So I hope you consider that. If they've waited five years to get the plans in. I really don't want to hear, gee, we only have two weeks or our plans are no good. To me, that's a strategy and it's not the way you do things. But that's just, you know, I have nothing to do with your schedules, but. I don't foresee unless this is very, very well organized and we're going to get through one night on Zoom. Just to get the city council to get it two weeks later. And my my real question is. How are you going to notice this to the city council if we have our meeting two weeks before and. You just notice it and then cancel it if we don't finish? Why don't we? Do our approvals and then notice it? You're talking, one of the biggest projects in the history of Mount. And we're worried about a day or two. And that's really my question.
Understand, and we are able and to notice it prior to a decision of the planning commission. I don't disagree with any of your points and because of that. We are making certain to do our best to reach everyone. So if we have interested parties. From that have popped up along the way on this. I know there is one party, I'm gonna. Make it a point. Today was a bit hectic, but to give him a call tomorrow. And make sure that he's in the loop because we want to make sure it's fully vetted. And as far as the noticing, I will continue to work with the city manager's office so that. We're looped in with the council so that there are no surprises there. But your comments are correct and well taken about the timeframe it has taken to have them make a submittal to the city.
So the May thirty-first notices actually went out today.
The public hearing notice was prepared today and I don't know if the mailer went out today. But Rebecca, do you know exactly when that mailer is going to go out? Because I know we were down to the wire. You needed it at five o'clock today.
Rebecca, are you there?
I'm I'm consulting with my in-house expert. Just one moment.
Dennis, while she's looking.
No, this, I'm always tapped into the school thing.
Okay, Jeff, are you, yeah?
Yes, I I, while we're talking about the school district. The school district about a week ago placed about fifteen or twenty. Concrete K rails on along Merritt Drive. Not not the most attractive fencing that could be established, but. I had asked the guys who were doing it whether they had city permits and. I said, no, 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 we just worked with the school district and I wonder whether I I know. That you were informed of this at some point. Is that going to be sent to code enforcement or how is that going to be dealt with, Richard?
Yes, we already reached out to them about that. You are entirely correct. They did it without informing the city of that work. And my understanding is that there used to be some. Dirt berms, I guess, that would prevent folks from driving and parking onto the property. But we've already contacted them about making a formal submittal to the department. And also having it reviewed by our public works department, since that's a city street. We want to make certain that anything they do there is not within the city's right-of-way or impeding parking access.
But given the the fact that the the street itself is wider than the pavement, I I suspect that you're going to find that those K rails. Are on part of the public right-of-way. They do restrict public parking along the. Along the western side of the street a little bit.
I'll be, I I'll be glad to provide, I can look into it more and see if. Because like I said, I did ask Public Works to go out there. I can follow up with them if you like and and have an answer for the commission at the next meeting.
That sounds good. Back to Rebecca.
That public hearing notice was submitted to the newspaper today. It will be published on Thursday. On Thursday, the mailers will also go out for all of the people within the radius.
Okay, Dennis, are you, what do you got?
Well, this, it isn't about the school, so if anybody else has something about the school, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know what else there is to say at this point.
Okay, so I was talking about what, you know, maybe an afternoon session. I I. I've got it written right here, but the biologist, the biologist is only here one day a week for two hours. And it's been that way forever and I'm not sure. We need, we need her now to be there. I mean, we're open for business. People need to be there. I know we're not going to get her a couple of days a week, but maybe. The least four hours on on one of those. I'm not sure which day she's there, Tuesday or Thursday, but. We we need to, we need to be in front of people as much as we can to keep this ball rolling. So there you go. Thank you.
I agree with Dennis. John?
Yeah, Dennis, are you, are you talking about us having sessions or?
Counter hours. Counter hours.
Counter hours, counter hours.
Yeah.
I found real problems with afternoon sessions.
Yeah, counter hours. Okay, any other commissioner comments? If not, then we're on to Richard and staff comment.
Thank you very much, Chair. Commissioner Smith, understand your point. I have a meeting actually tomorrow morning after A and F with Courtney. To talk about counter hours and then also make certain to the other catches, we we need her out in the field doing final inspections for the fire rebuilds. So that's the other catch. We got two masters deserve there. I also wanted to let the commission know as well as the public listening. The antenna that was installed at the City College property the past few weeks. We did put together a memorandum that includes a synopsis of the approval process that the the project went through. And also identifies the next steps for that as well and provides some background information. You'll find a letter from the FAA there about them, you know, asserting essentially jurisdiction over it in a way. Because of its proximity to the Hillipad, but that can be found on the city's website. There is a page there listed Santa Monica College Campus Project. There is, it's on that page, it's linked to it. Or if there's anybody interested, just can't find it there, no problem. Our counter staff, if someone calls the the department. Or emails, we can definitely provide a link so that folks could look at that information. And the the short story is. The CDP was issued for the the construction of the tower and the college campus project. However. There were the requirements of a use permits to use that as a community emergency communications facility. So a county radio facility. As well as Verizon used to be located on the tower and they wish to come back. That application was conditioned that the county was required. To apply for those CUPs prior to the construction of the tower. That obviously didn't happen. We've asked them, informed them to stop work on the tower. No more work is supposed to take place until the county makes an application with the city for the necessary use permits. So those would come before this body. And also in case someone is wondering, how did they get permits to build the tower and this and that? And the city has the planning sphere of influence over that that county property. But the county handles the plan checking and the issuance of construction permits. So it was not our building and safety folks that issued a permit for that construction. So wanted to make that clear to you that. No one there in our department or in the city's departments missed an opportunity to stop them. It's they they started this on their own without. Communicating to us.
Okay, thank you. And and knowing this is going to be coming to us now, John, you you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I I skimmed Richard's. Report. And I also went back and looked at our deliberations and. What was approved in the staff. I had a couple of questions. One. When this all came up, there are all kinds of pictures of what looked like a smokestack there. And the, what we approved was. Looks more like a high-tension tower with. Bars that hold it up instead of a smokestack. And then also the pictures that were submitted by the public. Had no railings and I went down there yesterday. There's three sets of railings with. Places to attach antennas that have been installed in the last couple of weeks. So that's one question of how the, can the county change. The look of a building. When we approve it one way and they make it look differently. The second question is, why would the F? A A. Want a red and white smokestack directly next to the building below the roof level? Is there a reason why there has to be red and white? If a plane is flying that low, it's going to hit the building. That would make a huge difference. So I hope the city does something about that. There's obviously no, if you had the Empire State Building and you had a a tower that was. One story higher than it, you wouldn't paint the tower red and white all the way down to the ground. So. There can't be a requirement for that.
And just to add a clarification on his question. The the original tower was view permeable and it sounds like that's what this prior commission approved was something view permeable and that's not what this is. Trevor? Where, you had your hand up there? No? Okay, sorry. Richard?
Sure, certainly. So. The two questions there, the, on page seventy-five of the memorandum are a set of plans that came from the staff report. And be glad to look at this in more detail. It's been busy the last week, but what the staff has informed me is that. Those three sets of mounting areas were constructed. To plan, they are twelve feet, I guess, the dimensions were twelve feet long on each. It's like a triangle. With the antenna in the middle there and you've got these three and each leg of that triangle is is twelve feet. I'm being told that was correct. As for the color. There is a provision in the federal regulations. It allows, I think, for folks to to try to work with the FAA to ask about changes to the. The hazard marking colors. That is definitely something we can have a talk with the county about when they make the application to the city. I don't disagree with Commissioner Maza. If somebody is below the roof line of that building, the tower is their least concern. You've got a building there and but once again, that's something that has to be worked through with the federal. Federal agency. This is a, you know, I know we have our LCP, that's a state level and now we've kind of in because of this. Towers location, it puts it in a another jurisdiction that's a bit higher than us. But we can ask that question because as I mentioned, I did see that in the federal requirements. There there was a mechanism to question color.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioner comments? Now with that, then.
You've gone my moles, Greg.
I've got what?
We can't hear you.
I'm, I appear to be unmuted.
I can hear you, Chair Hill.
I can hear him too.
Yeah, everybody can hear me. You, you can't hear me, Jeff?
Maybe I just can't hear anybody.
You maybe, yeah, somebody else speak. Richard, talk to Jeff.
Commissioner Jennings, can you hear me?
Maybe it's me.
It is you. Okay.
Now can you hear us?
Now can you hear us? We're here. We we can, we can all hear each other. Can you not hear us? We're all here, all talking to each other. And.
Now?
Can you hear us now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, now I can't.
Yeah, it is just you. It's just you.
Muted myself and then turned it back on and I could hear it.
Huh, okay, all right.
Let me try something else.
None of us went anywhere. So we're here and.
Let me say something.
Yeah, can you hear?
Can you hear us?
No.
Speak somebody, no?
Do you want to let him log back in?
Yeah.
Yeah, try logging back in. Can, maybe somebody can call him, Rebecca, or who else is here is.
Alex, are you on?
Alex.
Alex or Parker?
I am. Can somebody send me his phone number?
I am. Can somebody send me his phone number? I can give him a call.
I bet. I got it. I got it.
Never mind.
You figured it out?
Yep, figured it out.
Oh, good, okay. All right, well, everybody keep an eye on Jeff for the next couple of minutes and see if he's still there. So we're on to item three B, the consent calendar, new items. Yeah, John?
I make a motion, we accept consent item three B.
I, I have a, well, okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, for discussion, I, I have a question on this that's pretty much almost clerical, and maybe I should just ask it of Trevor and and then see if we need to actually open the item or not. Is that a proper way or do we, do we need?
You can ask me, you can ask me the question.
Okay, well, it's just, we have a rationale here that relates to COVID delay, et cetera, and I'm just wondering. It, we've had past items where we've had recitals in, in the findings about the, the reasons for that. And in this case, would we want to either recopy some of those same rationales and/or, I know in Ken Arilick's letter, they they provided some rationale and whether that would need to be copied into the finding too or not.
Well, if, if you want to propose adding that, we're going to have to pull the item. So the, the choice is either to to, to push the, the motion forward here, Chair Hill, or if you want to pull the item and then take any comment and propose a change to it, you could do that, but I'm going to make a change, you're going to have to pull the item.
Well, and so my question is, you know, is it, it seems like it's sort of basically the same difference, but procedurally does it matter or in terms of precedent if we want to be including these, these rationales in the finding or not? Do we, do we need, is there consistency?
Pretty much, I'll answer this. If we want to talk more, we should open the item. But i- if you feel that, that that the, the findings are insufficient to, to justify, to, to demonstrate good cause as required by the, the findings for the extension, then you should request that they be amended. So I'll leave it to you then, if you want to pull the item and, and make a proposal, or if, or if you're comfortable with what's there. If it's just a, a case of it could be better, but it's sufficient as it is, then you can just move it as a consent item.
Yeah, I'm asking a sort of open-ended question. So if, if, if others feel strongly, one way or the other, I, I'm, I don't want
If you're going to pull them, we should just, we should just pull it. So if, if you, the question, if you want to make the, the choice yourself and it doesn't matter to you, then you could just do it. But if we're going to pull everyone else, we should just open the item.
Oh, well, let's just quickly ask John. He has a hand up.
Oh, I, I would like to hold my motion. It's only an extension and then no speakers.
Right, okay. All right, then I will, I will leave my question as basically just a clerical procedural kind of thing and, and we don't need to open it. And so on, on that, then we, I guess we have the motion. We need a vote, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Witten?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion care.
Alright, thank you. Now we're on to continued, no, we're skipping item four A, continued public hearing, on to five A. Coastal Development Permit Number eighteen dash zero zero six, tentative parcel map number eighteen dash zero zero two, conditional use permit number eighteen dash zero zero six, variance number eighteen dash zero four three, and demolition permit number twenty-two zero zero five, an application for the conversion of a two-unit duplex into a two-unit condominium, addition, partial demolition, interior, interior remodel and onsite wastewater treatment system replacement for the unit located at two zero five five zero Pacific Coast Highway. May we have a staff report, please?
Certainly, Chair Hill. I'll be stepping in for Adrian on this one and give you a the overview of the project. And, and then for further questioning, I'll be glad to address those or the applicant. If I may have the next slide, please? This is an aerial photograph that shows the subject lot that is before you this evening for consideration. The lot is currently developed with a two-story duplex. And as you've, if you were to visit the site or look at Google Street View, any of the aerial photos in the areas, you could see that the area consists of very similar development. A good majority of the surrounding homes appear to have been subdivided prior to cityhood. These duplexes and we're creating, basically, we're creating a good number of single-family residences that essentially have a, a shared common wall. In the case of the subject property, each of the owners in this case owns half the property. Each unit involved on this property, they each have a separate address. And they also have a, their own wastewater treatment system. If I may have the next slide, please? What you have before you is a tentative parcel map to essentially convert the duplex into a two-unit condominium. So this will remain as a multifamily use on the property. We're not changing that. And then there is also a conditional use permit aspect of the application as well. And the reason for that is that any multifamily use in the multifamily beachfront zoning district, even though that's in the name, requires a conditional use permit for that. The only type of residential use that's permitted there without a conditional use permit is actually a single-family home per the city zoning ordinances. So with the inclusion of the conditional use permit, we're bringing the existing duplex use into compliance. And it'll be memorialized as a multifamily use. If I may have the next slide, please? In addition to the change in how the ownership is documented, the application also includes a, as part of the coastal development permit, a demolition re- and remodel. There's, at present, the applicant proposes a forty-six percent of the unit's exterior walls. And then there is also the removal, I hope it's clear here, there is the removal of a hundred and twenty-seven square feet that appears to be part of an unpermitted addition that took place of the first floor prior to the current owner's ownership of of the, the property. And then also the conversion of a single carport that is existing into a garage. And this will result in essentially the enclosure of another hundred and eighty-two square feet. And there is also the reconstruction of the rear first floor deck. And as I mentioned, an interior and exterior remodel. There's also a wastewater system proposed with it. And because the building itself, based on the project plans, you'll see only appears to be eighteen feet wide, that's going to result in a garage width that is below the city standard. The city requires essentially the interior of a two-car garage to have a eighteen-foot deep by twenty-foot wide. This is from measurement of interior wall, the interior wall. Obviously, it's on, it's impractical to achieve that twenty-foot width without either expanding the building's footprint, which would cut into the view corridor on the easterly side of the property, or would require to demolish a portion of the common wall and intrude into the neighboring residences' garage. So as a result, the applicant has requested that variance. This is a site plan review showing, excuse me, a site plan view showing the proposed project in the development area. What you see there in the center of this diagram is the lot as it currently stands today.
We, we don't see a diagram.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have the next slide, please?
Okay.
Chair Hill. What you see in this diagram is you see in the middle there, the, the subject property. You see the building and the unit that's on the west or Ventura side of the property. As you can see, does not have a carport. It has essentially an enclosed two-car garage. And then on the other side of that common wall to the east, which would be the right-hand side of this, of this site plan, you see the subject property, you see the garage that is there towards the top of the property, looking towards the highway. And then that open area that you see there, that is currently the area for the unenclosed parking. That is where currently it's a covered carport. It's under the first, excuse me, the second floor. And vehicle, a vehicle now currently parks there. If I may have the next slide, please? What you see before you on this slide is you can see the area, the first floor that they propose to capture, to create the carport, the enclosed parking area. The carport essentially is that grade area that is to the right and lower right portion of the existing first floor. Currently, the existing space is seven feet, ten inches wide because there is no exterior wall. Which obviously gives you a bit more room to open a car door. Yeah, but once you enclo- enclose it, you drop the wall to, to keep yourself in line with the existing walls. The interior space on this garage gives, is become sixteen feet, ten inches. If I may have the next slide, please? So in summary, staff is recommending approval of the project as conditioned to allow for the conversion from a duplex to two condo units, maintaining the multifamily use processing of the conditional use permit to bring the use into compliance and document it so that that conditional use permit requirement has been satisfied. There is a section in our zoning ordinance that states that ideally within, I think it was twenty years after incorporation of the city. Properties that required CUPs would have obtained them by twenty thirteen. And the council's direction to staff on that was that as we see projects come before the department, if a CUP was required, that is the time to require one. So the applicant complied and, and did make that application, so we could resolve that issue. And I did receive some questions about variances in the area and some of the existing garages. I had Adrian as well, some other staff members do a bit of research to look and see the permitting history of those, and I was unable to find applications for, for a lot, for a number of those that, you know, you definitely see garage doors. And you know that it took place after the building was built. However, a lot of this development based on aerial photos appears to have taken place prior to cityhood. As some of the subdivisions of those lots did take place prior to cityhood. We did find evidence that in some areas, for example, to the south of this, we did approve a variance for a substandard garage width. Also found evidence on Malibu Road of a variance being processed for a substandard width for a apartment being converted to a condo type situation as well. And once again, it was an existing building. The one difference I could find in those applications is that they were essentially just asking for a change in ownership on Malibu Road. They did not propose any development with that application. I think it was mainly a wastewater system. But the building and, and the parking, they were not trying to enclose anything, not trying to do anything to bring it actually closer to conformance. They just wanted to maintain what they had and essentially change it from an apartment building to a four-unit condominium complex. Thank you very much. I'm available for any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Before we do that, let's, let's disclose any ex parte communications, any information learned. John, anything?
Yes, I asked some questions of Adrian and I got email back. I can read you the answers if you want.
If there's something new that, that we don't all know.
Well, we had a debate on whether you could open a car door in a foot and a half. He claims you can.
Yeah.
My car and you can't, but whatever.
We'll, we'll probably talk about that more. Mark, disclosures?
Just that I drove by it and looked at the site today and I didn't learn anything different.
Dennis?
None.
Jeff? I, I went down there. I was looking at it, took a tape measure, just to double check and the, see in fact that it's ten-foot width currently of the open space, the unenclosed space to the property line, right down the middle of the houses. And there's a twelve-and-a-half foot gap between the structure and the utility pole, which will be relevant in a moment. And while I was there looking at it and trying to take it all in and looking at many other houses on the, in the same area, have the same exact situation as, as has been proposed. But now as Richard has said, it may well be that those were all done before cityhood. So hard to weigh those, but while I was looking at all that, the resident of two oh five five two came out, came out through his garage. And so we had a chat about the safety of the situation and the logistics and how things work. And one thing I observed and learned from him is that people don't generally park in their garages because they're too narrow. And it's really hard to get in and out of them off the highway because you, because they're narrow, you have to make a little bit more of a perpendicular approach to and from the garage, which ends up getting your tail stuck out into traffic a little bit. So it's kind of difficult. And in fact, they then end up parking a double parking parallel, parallel parked double. And because everybody does the double parallel park, to get out, you have to have a traffic monitor, get out and stand a little bit further ahead on that blind turn, that, that there's kind of a blind curve on PCH where the and, and that traffic monitor then gives you a wave when you're safe to go. So it's, it's a, it's kind of an inherently unsafe situation. Then, but I don't know how relevant that becomes here, and we'll talk about it, I guess, but it, it's inherently unsafe. I don't know that we can make it more or less safe by anything we do here. And by way of disclosures, I think that's about all I have. I did ask, I sent an email to Trevor about a question about the tentative parcel map and whether that in itself, changing from duplex to condos, whether that triggers the application of current standards or not. And I don't know if you want to answer that now or that's for part of the discussion? Trevor?
We, we, we can open the, the public comment about, you know, we can get back into, into that, but the, the recommendation from staff is, is the same, but we can, we can, we can talk more about that after you've gone through public comment.
Okay, great. Well, with that, then let's, let's go to the public hearing. And Rebecca, who do we have there, please?
We have a considerable group for the applicant team, and it's a little tricky because we do have two proposed, well, two owners of this property. Each of them are represented by legal advisors. And then we also have one of the owners, Larry Young, for answering, is available for any questions about subject. And the architect is also available for questions. To open, would Christina Croft or Greg Torres prefer to begin?
I see Christina Croft's hand up. Let's hear from her and she can maybe tell us how the group would like to organize their presentation in the fifteen minutes that they would have allotted.
Good evening, Christina Croft, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hello, I wanted to go first because I actually represent Andrew and Sarah Sugarman, who are the owners of two zero five five two PCH. And our only involvement here is the tentative parcel map and CUP to split into two. And so unless the commissioners have any questions specifically about that, I would defer the remainder of the time to the other property owner who has the remodel and variance, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. And can, can we have whoever might be organizing any collective presentation here to put up their hand and just make sure we've got your time is allocated in, in, in an appropriate way. Is it, that would be Nick? We want to hear from Nick first.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, panel commissioners, Commissioner Chair Hill. So I am the architect on the project and we have Christina, who just spoke, is representing the parcel map for two zero five five two. And my client And my client, um, John Dermanjan is on the phone as his hand, his land use attorney Greg, and we have the wastewater designer Larry Young available. We don't have a presentation, we're just here for any questions.
Oh, okay. Yeah, all right, great. Um, so um, are there other public speakers then that aren't part of the applicant team?
If there are any other members of the public who wish to speak on this, please raise your hand using the button at the bottom of your screen. Seeing none.
Okay, they're none. So, okay, it's good to know we've got uh the full applicant team there for any questions, and that will close the public hearing. And bring it back to the commission table, who would like to, well, I guess, open with any technical questions for staff to clarify anything? Maybe we should, maybe we can just jump right back to the question I mentioned already. Oh, John, you have a hand up.
I, I suggest we have Trevor tell us his answer and then we go on.
Yeah, yeah. So that my, my, my quote, my wonder was about, in effect, uh, under what authority does a duplex acts as the grandfather for a condominium, which is is or is or isn't a different use? I don't know. Do we, does the tentative parcel map trigger something, a new uh standards application?
Sure, I, I can start this and I can pass it to Richard, but my understanding is that apartments and condominiums and duplexes have all been treated the same interchangeably when they're passed back and forth on the building itself is not changing. Um, it's, it's not um uh required that, that uh, that, that any additional parking be required um as, as part of that type of conversion. It also has to do with the language on the deal specifically with parking, that it's, it's based on any change for the any addition to the structure itself. Richard, if you want to talk more about how that's been sort of a, uh, the precedent here in dealing with this, because um, buildings are often changed between these two different forms, um, back and forth.
Yes, that is correct. Um, as I mentioned, the, the multifamily use in with for, I think it was uh two, four, one two, four, one, two, four, four, two. It was a multifamily on Malibu Road. Um, the, the parking was not compliant in terms of size or number of spaces. And it was simply looked at as just a, a change in ownership and not a change in use. And, and the reason being is that it was looked at as the use being multifamily. And it was remaining a multifamily building, and it wasn't changing other than just essentially a paper conversion. And the section of the code that um Trevor was mentioning, trying to do this all with one screen, I apologize. Is in our specific parking requirements, our parking requirements are tied to uh to development. So, for example, in seventeen dot forty-eight dot oh three oh, it states that for additions to existing development, the increased parking requirement shall only be based on the addition. So in the case of what you have for you here, we did look at the addition. Uh, additions in the malt, in multifamily, our parking requirements, I should state, don't distinguish between an apartment complex, a duplex, or a condominium, or a stock cooperative. Uh, they view all those simply under the term of multifamily. And so in order to trigger an increase in parking, uh, we would be looking for an additional bedroom, the creation of another bedroom on this building, and they did not do that. Um, the, there is no change to to make this thing have more people in it, I guess is the way to put it. But that is the reason. So the city's past stance on these has been to look at development, and then also simply uh, the, you know, to take this as a conversion of ownership and not look at that as a, an opportunity to extinguish the grandfathering uh rights of the building.
Okay. Who else? John?
Yeah, I just want to get down to my problem and uh with this project, and that is I assume that table three, which is zoning conformance, is incorrect. It says it's going to propose three enclosed and one covered parking space. I'm assuming that that's incorrect. It's proposing four enclosed spaces. And the problem I have is that finding three, we have to say that this, this is not a special privilege. And what been told is, Richard can only find two in Malibu. And only one that's within five miles of here. Uh, so I have a problem with special privilege. Uh, the other problem I have is that when you do the math, and, and I looked up how wide cars are, and we had a debate, uh, Adrian and I, you know, varying five inches basically. Uh, but you have eight and a half feet, according to Richard, for a car to park. And the small, uh, Toyota Camry is three point three eight. And my BMW is, I mean, six and six point three eight, my, and that's a Toyota Camry, it's not a big car. And, and my BMW is six, a little over six and a half. That gives you one point four inches, I mean, one foot, four inches for both sides. Uh, I tried to open my door with one point four inches, and I'm not the skinniest guy in the world. But my door isn't two inches wide. I, I, I cannot get in the car, period. At one point four inches, I want one foot, four inches. It's impossible. And that's if you park directly in the middle of the spot. You don't miss by an inch. And that's two spots. The two cars have to come in and line up exactly within an inch, and then they each get one point four inches to get out of their car. So I believe that creates a safety hazard. If you can't get out of your car, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do if the power goes out? You can't even back out. So I'm gonna be opposed unless somebody can convince me that you can get out of a one point four-inch space, including the door. That we deny that second garage. I'd rather have a covered parking space where at least the driver can get out of that space. Because he opens his door and there's no wall to hit. At least there's one way, one way you can get out. And then also, it's a special privilege under finding three, which can't be made. I, I can't believe that we can say it's not if there's only one in Malibu that is within five miles.
Okay, Jeff.
So, the real question, I have another question, and that is
Well, well, hang on, let's, let's, let's do these one at a time. Richard, can you just clarify? In response to that, you, I know you guys are busy, and you said you, you kind of looked and you found one other that was in the vicinity. Let's leave that Malibu Road for a minute, because that's not really in the vicinity, but did you, presumably you guys didn't look at every house along that whole stretch within, say, a quarter or a half mile either way. Um, how many, how, what proportion of those houses did you look up that, that you ended up finding only one that has been done since cityhood?
We essentially uh searched our resolution index to look for something where the, a similar case like this. You know, where someone, you know, there were ones in there where we actually eliminated parking. Uh, that's usually what we see a lot of actually in this part of town, is a reduction in parking. Uh, because of some of the issues that were brought up here tonight, which have to do with uh, the, basically the speed of traffic on PCH and the way these things are located right up on the highway. Uh, so a lot of times, what you'll see in that area, uh, for example, there's one right up the way from this, we eliminated one of the two unenclosed parking spaces. Uh, so that's usually what we do in that area. And as I mentioned, we did look at, um, you know, aerial photos, been down to the site, and I could not find uh, evidence on how a lot of those, uh, you could tell they're two-car garage doors. There's sixteen-foot wide doors is what it looks like. Couldn't find a lot of evidence on how those came to be. And I think we can all agree that if you walk down there, you're gonna see a lot of them. I, I, but I believe they, them to be older than than cityhood, from what I could tell, looking back at aerial photos.
And maybe a lot of them don't matter as much, but the fact that there's this group of them that are right, right in the vicinity of that blind curve makes them a little more significant in terms of the, how the narrowness affects the ingress and egress. Dennis?
Yeah, one, one thing here, um, on a positive note, is a couple of years ago, or I guess before the pandemic, maybe a little longer, when they kind of repaved and restriped at that end of town, they narrowed up the lanes. So what they gained on that side of the road, on the south side, on the water side, is they gained two feet of extra parking space. So they narrowed the lanes, they put the, uh, the median's much, much narrower. So there is a safety factor that got improved after Caltrans. Can imagine it, but in their infinite wisdom, actually made that better for people on that side of the street. So they gained, they gained two feet. When they did that. So it's, it's got to help the situation somewhat.
To me, the, the, the single most unsafe aspect right now is the, the way that everybody's double parallel parking. That if they're, I don't know if we could say we should put up signage or put a condition that says um, you can only single parallel park in front of a driveway there. Um, because like, for example, at, at this very house, if we enclose the corner on two oh five five oh, then a car would no longer be able to go forward from a parallel park position and dip inside of the utility pole, which what is what the owner can do now. He can go inside the utility pole, so you can come out and be facing into traffic at a more congenial angle. Whereas if we, if we enclose that whole space, the space between the utility pole and the corner of the structure is too narrow for a car to pass through. So it would be making that move, which is a little more safe, we'd be eliminating that move. Um, I, so I, I, I don't know. We, it's, Trevor, is that something we could even do, whatever else we decide, to put a condition that says no double parking? Or is that like more of a city ordinance thing at that point?
Right, can I make a comment on that?
Um, yet, while Trevor's thinking, yeah.
Okay, number one, it's already illegal. Okay, now Dennis is correct. Caltrans gained two feet of Caltrans right away. Okay, they paved two more feet. They drew the line on their property. None of that parking on the highway is part of this project. Okay, so when you double park, you're already illegal. You're parking in front of a driveway, which is a, you know, a, a code against that. You're also, when you're double parking, you're parking on essentially the sidewalk, and you're also parking in front of a garage that blocks it. Which is not legal either. So, yeah, uh, you can look the other way on a person's property. But you can't tell a CHP. It's like all the people down by the pier, when people park in front of their garage. Nobody knows whose garage it is. They'll get a ticket. They're parking in front of a garage. And so for us to say, gee, let's let them double park, and we'll put up a sign saying, don't, don't violate the law, it's already in existence. Is, is just not, is, it's not necessary. It's already illegal.
Trevor?
Chair Hill, I, I would echo exactly what um Commissioner Mas said right there. Um, you know, they, they can go and park in whatever form they want on their own property, but it, the minute they get on the right of way, and they're, they're they're impeding it at that point, then that they would be subject to being ticketed, and whoever lives in the property, I think, would be you know, sufficiently motivated to, to call if that becomes a problem and issue there.
So the people that are out there now with flagmen, as it were, to help them uh get, get away when there's no approaching traffic w- w- don't realize that they could just call the sheriff and say, hey, these might, well, maybe they do realize, but they don't want to call out their neighbor because they do the same double parking thing when they're there too. So it's, it's a uh what's the word I'm looking for? Anyway, I think you get my drift.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think those people want to prevent it from happening rather than wait for somebody to come and tow or, or ticket or deal with it.
Yeah, Mark?
I, I just want to confirm, it, it's not a requirement in the code for a conversion to have two enclosed parking spots. Am I right, uh, Richard? You, you could, you could approve the project with one enclosed and one covered space.
Richard, you're muted.
Guys, the city's practice on this has been to do exactly as Commissioner Witten had just, has just stated. Uh, we typically just focus on the, the change of ownership. If this were new development, then yes, we'd be trying to achieve the code requirements here for unenclosed and enclosed parking. Uh, this is purely optional at this point.
Yeah, Richard, question, uh. This is only if we le- leave that wall out. That means there's no change in the building. And you, you would need a variance like required here if you put the wall in, because we are excusing two unenclosed spaces already on each bill, on each condo. It's two and two required. So we're already taking an existing situation where it's impossible to put the second, the unenclosed parking in. But if we put that wall in, we're required to give a variance because it doesn't meet that code. Is that correct? Understand what I'm saying?
The, the, the parking requirements for the, I guess you call this a complex. Uh, from my reading, the code is that each unit should have a total of three spaces, two of which are enclosed. As each of these folks should be providing two enclosed, one enclosed, and then there is a guest parking requirement of one space, uh, for every four units. So, uh, we would just round up. So essentially, there ought to be a total of seven parking spaces on this property. That's what the code's asking, or if you were to build this thing today, uh, that would be what we would be looking for.
Okay, so we're legal non-conforming if we don't change it.
Correct.
Change it. Uh, it's a special privilege and it's non-conforming, and it needs a variance. And we can't give the variance because it's a special privilege. That's the way I'm looking at it. And it's also unsafe. Uh, you can't, you, you, we already have a situation where one of the units probably doesn't have anybody parking it, or maybe one car, because you can't get out of a one and, one and a quarter foot door. Uh, so if, if we, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the project with the deletion of the construction of a wall on the westward side. In other words, no change in, in uh
I'm sorry.
No change in construction, except for the interior construction.
Of everything except leaving the one space uh unenclosed, covered, covered, unenclosed.
Well, that would be everything outside. If you, if you get, yeah, everything, because that's the only thing that they're asking for. So my motion is we approve the project with the deletion of the enclosed with any ex, you know, any exterior wall in the parking area on the area that is, doesn't have one.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a second for discussion. Uh, my, my take is that it, you know, any way we cut it, that's just a pretty unsafe stretch, and I do agree that um, not enclosing that space does make it marginally safer, just because it, it just adds that much more maneuverability. Trevor?
Chair Hill, I, I, if, if you're not gonna prove that part of it, I suggest you uh ask the applicant if uh they prefer to have a, a denial of the application. Versus an approval that, that would, that would not include the uh, the enclosed parking as requested.
Yeah, Nick, are you here? And did you hear that? Oh, we have Gregory Torres's. Rebecca, is uh Gregory unmuted?
Um, I've asked to unmute. It appears that he's not muted at the moment at our end.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm no longer muted. Thank you.
There you are. Hi.
Sorry about that little technical difficulty. Um, i- if you bear with me one Sorry about that little technical difficulty. Um, i- if you bear with me one one minute, I just want to um get confirmation from my client, but I believe the proposal of approval of the project without the uh carport enclosure would be acceptable if you would just give me a a second to confirm that.
Okay. And in the meantime, Jeff, do you have your hand up there?
Yes, I'm a little confused. They the I I'm looking at the configuration. What what is contemplated is not a change in the configuration of the parking, correct? It's it's just a question of you're gonna have the same number of cars parked there, right?
Motion.
In that space.
Yeah.
And um and so two things, I I I think that that depending on the number of cars you park in there, it makes a difference um as to whether the space is is wide enough to open the car door. Um, went through this with my own rebuild and thinking about the width of the garage. It it, yes, it's a problem if you've got two people in the car and you both want to uh get out at the same time. Uh, but in most cases, people are single drivers in a car. And if you pull up close to the wall, I think there is enough room to open your door and get out um of the driver's side, for example. That's that's my first thought on it. Um, secondly, garages um only nominally hold cars. They also hold uh other things. Um, how you can walk down any street in this town and there'll be cars parked on the street because the garage is a workshop or a game room or a this or a that, or it's just storage. Uh, usually it's just storage. Um, so I'm not sure that I'm convinced that there's uh that big a safety issue uh with from just putting a wall up along that side. Um, and finally, uh, Richard, what's 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 the state's rationale for requiring the garages be X feet in width? What what's the what's the public uh purpose there?
I would have to I would have to take a a look back at the when we passed our our ordinance, because it appears from just looking at what the county required, we upped the width by about two feet. It it seems like in the eighties, the county requirement was actually eight feet. Uh, because when you look at garage doors, the majority of garage doors for a double car garage uh tend to be sixteen feet. Uh, my garage door is sixteen feet with a foot on each side. Uh, and just as you mentioned, the way I park in there is you have the passenger get out and and park the two cars next to each other. Uh, but I would have to try to look and see why, as a city, we increased the the garage width by essentially four feet.
Um, uh, John?
Well, if you uh drive around West LA or any part of LA, you'll you'll find out that there's a lot of garages designed for Model Ts. You can't even get a one car. Cars are wider than they uh and if you can't get out of your car. Now, one of Jeff's rationales is, oh gee, you're only one guy in your car. Well, if you pull in close to the car next to you, so you can get out on the driver's side, then you can't get in the car next to you. So it's still just and uh so you say you got your your Porsche on one side and your Mercedes on the other, and you want to get in the Mercedes, but your wife parked the the uh Porsche two inches from the Mercedes so she could get out of the Porsche. You can't get in the Mercedes. It's just math. It's just purely math. The main thing also is it's a special privilege. We can't make that finding. Um, you're supposed to make that finding. You have to make that finding.
I think if you look down there at at along, just as Richard said, if you you look along that stretch of beach, you're gonna see a bunch of garage doors, just that width.
Right.
They are, but I guess the point is we haven't found that any of them have been done that way since cityhood or very, you know, one or few.
And we don't even find permits on ones prior to cityhood. Um, but that's what voting laws are about. They're supposed to change when the when the condition changes. If twenty years from now, everybody's driving little little tiny cars, little tiny electric cars with Mr. Schmitz, then maybe you can put three cars in.
Well, let's say that the people who are who own this property um ride motorcycles. I mean, shouldn't they be allowed to to have their parking or their quote garage unquote configured however they want? Plus the fact in this in this particular situation, one car can pull into that forward space, which leaves that second space back with enough room to get out because it's not really blocked off by by another car.
But we are already eliminating two parking spaces that are required for each one of these units.
We're not eliminating anything.
Yes, we are. There's a requirement for two exterior parking spaces. They have been eliminated.
They may have been eliminated, but that was done before. We're not by this, excuse me, John, by this proposal, we're not changing anything. We're not eliminating anything. Unless I'm confused.
We're building a wall.
Okay, guys, hang on. Let's let's hear what Mark has to say.
Well, I I think if we approve it as proposed, I think we're making uh the the situation unsafe, which is worse. I mean, we're we're we're, you know, we have an opportunity here to 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 to, you know, look at it one way or the other. And I think if we uh if we approve this thing, I mean, we're we're creating a liability for the city uh by approving something that's that's a variance to the code that is there for a reason. I think, you know, we we can't put our, you know,
I don't know what the reason is.
Well, but it is, you know, it it it, I'm sure it's partially for safety. Um, so I I think that's something to consider.
And I'll just point out that right right now, the existing width available to cars is nine feet in the single interior spot plus ten feet in the exterior space. And that's not even counting if you, there's no wall there. So theoretically, you could open your car door even further into the neighbor's property. But so that's nineteen feet minimum. And we're saying let what we want to reduce that now is into is to a sixteen foot width. So that seems a significant difference to me. Dennis?
Somebody, somebody explain to me what how it's how how we're changing the safety. Is it just by putting the wall up there, you make the door short, you make the space narrow?
You you make you you make the approach to the space have to be that much closer to perpendicular to get in. And so coming in and off the highway, that makes it a little tougher. And it also blocks off one potential egress for the Parker who can come inside the utility pole now and go out the other side. You won't be able to get around through the past the pole now with the corner of the building comes out. Dennis, what's your?
Um, let's ask Mr. Torres what he came up with.
Yeah, is he? Well, oh, are any, I don't see hands. Are there other hands up? There is his hand, uh, Mr. Torres.
You need to unmute him.
Rebecca, can you do that, please? Or Alex, who who's doing that? He's, there he is.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
I I guess, but I guess before I ultimately answer the question, it it initially seemed that that the concern was the width of the garage and being able to exit the vehicle. And what I would propose to use that a Prius is about five point seven feet. Um, Teslas have now the suicide doors that don't open out, they open up. So I think the concern about the garage width and the ability to get in and out of a vehicle is really a a subjective issue. If you're a motorcycle rider, it's a mood issue. If you have one of the small little smart cars uh that are electric and sold by BMW or Mercedes, it's a mood issue. Um, I know for myself, I've got a two-car garage. I've got a big Benali and a BMW, and we put it in and it's difficult. Um, I I it seemed to me that the more um relevant concern related to the highway um and pulling in and off Pacific Coast Highway. And all I would say in that regard is I don't believe that the that this construction makes it any more uh unsafe in that regard. But having said that, um, the applicant would be willing uh to withdraw that portion of the applications relating to um making the carport a a closed-in garage uh if that alternative approach would get the remainder of the applications approved.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'll call a question.
You're calling the question?
He's made an answer.
We don't do that, John. You know that.
What do you mean? He, we asked him?
You don't call the question. You 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 remember endless debate, right?
Um, so from now on, Jeff, endless debate. Is that right?
All right, guys.
I'm just repeating your argument.
Okay, well, endless debate on this debate. We we had a motion, we had a second.
Okay, Jeff Jeff has more he wants to say, though. Let's let's hear from Jeff.
If he'd want to do something different, he said no. So where do we stand? What do you want to debate now?
I want to debate what the proper form of the motion is, John, because the proper form of the motion, I believe, is to direct staff to come back with a resolution uh supporting the idea that you've got, but that the motion should be to direct staff to bring back a resolution.
Okay, bring back a resolution. That's usually what the motion is anyway.
Okay, Trevor, what's the, what's your, Trevor?
Uh, uh, well, let's check with Richard. Richard, is your preference here to have the the plans brought back so that you can see exactly what that's going to look like in this case?
I I think, look, I've been looking at the plans actually as we speak. You probably saw my eyes look up. And i- if the, you know, if this is as simple as just not dropping that wall, what I understand this to be, and this is correct, I don't think it needs to come back. What I understand is that the wall does not get constructed and the door placed on that area. Uh, if that is truly all this entails, and I think Nick can confirm that, I I don't see a need for us to return with plans unless the planning commission would like us to.
Okay.
Um, so so in that case, the motion then would be staff's recommendation, um, except that um do you want to describe the the wall and the door that 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 there are not to be constructed?
You can just say no exterior uh construction other than uh what is shown as the forty-six percent.
Um, Richard, you just said you wanted to double check from Nick. Nick's got his hand up. Do we want to ask him that? Richard, do you do you need to hear from Nick?
If we could, I just to confirm, because that's what I'm, I seem to understand from the plans. Is that correct, Nick?
Yeah, hi, Richard. Yeah, so we would prior to green stamp, after if this passed, we would update the plans and showing, instead of showing proposed garage infill, we would make it look like the existing.
Okay. So it'd be it'd be um staff's recommendation with the condition added that you want to describe what's not to be constructed, Richard?
That's correct. Basically, to for them not to construct, not to propose the door and demolish the there's a twenty-foot section of wall. We don't want them to demolish and just to maintain that. And that would do it, because that's the wall that they're having to demolish to create the two-car garage.
Okay, can you specify where it is or a plan that would show? Um, would it just be existing in those areas? It would remain as existing?
Essentially, um, maintain the existing garage. I I would say maintain that the parking as shown on sheet A dash two point zero. That shows the wall uh that's existing, and it shows the open parking space. And I believe that achieves exactly what Commissioner Mazza is looking for.
Okay, so the the motion of the staff's recommendation uh with the condition added that the parking shall remain as depicted on um page A dot twenty. Is that correct, Richard?
Two point oh.
Two point oh.
Sorry. A two point oh. Does that reflect your motion, Commissioner Mazza?
Yes, it does.
And who had the second?
I think I did.
Mark.
Commissioner Witten.
Commissioner Witten, does that reflect your second?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, it sounds like we're ready to call a vote on this. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Witten?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Oh.
Vice Chair Smith?
No.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, everybody. I would like to take five minutes before we get on to the next item. I think hopefully that's agreeable to everybody.
Yes.
Um, it's, let's see, I see eight oh three. We want to make it a tight five minutes, or you want to call it eight ten? What's anybody's pleasure?
Let's just make it eight ten.
Eight ten. Okay, back at eight ten. Thank you. Everybody turn off your gear. Well, here we are, and it's eight eleven. Okay. There's Renika, hi. And we're, and there's Mark. And we're back. Um, so now we are on to item five B. Coastal development permit number nineteen dash zero six four and minor modification number twenty-one dash zero zero three. An application for a new single-family residence and associated development continued from February, February seventh, twenty-twenty-two, located at twenty-eight one sixteen Pacific Coast Highway within the appealable zone. Uh, may we have a staff report, please, Renika?
Yes, uh, thank you, Commissioner Hill. My name is Renika Brooks. I'm the planner on this project, um, which consists of the construction of a new single-family residence and associated development. Um, this item was previously, um, scheduled to be considered by the planning commission at its February seventh, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Um, before the distribution of the agenda report, staff became aware that the proposed development would occur within the required one-hundred-foot buffer from previously mapped Oakwoodland Escha located on the neighboring property located at two-eight one-two-eight PCH, which is known as Paradise Cove. Although the extent of this Escha is not identified on the city's LCP Escha maps, a site-specific biological assessment for the neighboring property identified the Oakwoodland Escha up to the western property line of the project site. Um, staff continued this pro- this project to a date uncertain to allow additional time to conduct this analysis. And after conducting the additional analysis, staff concluded that the project as proposed would not result in new Escha impacts and could proceed with the development review process. And I'll go into more detail regarding the Escha impact analysis later in this presentation. Next slide, please. The site is approximately one and a quarter acres in size and sits on a mesa with an elevation approximately fifteen feet above Pacific Coast Highway. Access to the property is provided by gated entries at the dry, at a driveway on the northwest side of the property at Paradise Cove Road. And access is also provided by an access easement from the Ramirez Canyon Road through a tunnel which runs under Pacific Coast Highway. The site is the northernmost property of three contiguous, um, lots which separate Pacific Coast Highway from the, um, up to the north um, and the Pacific Ocean to the south. The surrounding land, land uses include ru- rural residential developments, um, on the northeast and, um, south. And to the west of the project site is the forty-acre, um, Paradise Cove Mobile Home Park and Restaurant Complex. Next slide, please. The project consists of construction of a new one-story single-family residence with a basement and a detached, um, garage with basement. The project also includes the installation of an onsite wastewater treatment system, new retaining wall, um, the relocation of a vehicle, um, vehicle entry gate for which a minor modification is requested, installation of new landscaping, hardscape and grading. Next slide, please. This is, this site plan illustrates the project layout, which includes the relocation of the vehicle entry gate for which a minor modification is requested. The minor modification allows the front yard setback to be reduced from fifty-six feet to twenty-eight feet. The setback reduction allows the solid vehicle entry gate to have a height up to six feet eight inches. And the existing, the existing vehicle entry gate would be located approximately fifteen feet, um, south of the existing gate, which would include vehicular circulation, um, at the two points of entry. Next slide, please. This image, um, shows the extent of the previously mapped, um, Oakwoodland Escha, which is located in the light blue, um, shaded area. Staff needed additional time to assess potential impacts of the project's required fuel modification, which is shown in the solid blue line. Um, this fuel modification would extend across the property line into this previously mapped Escha. The LCP includes provisions for determining, um, an area as Escha. And according to the LCP Land Use Policy three-point-one, existing legally established fuel modification areas required by the fire department for legal structures do not meet the definition of Escha. Um, so there are existing mobile homes, um, which I mentioned previously on the western property, and the yellow solid line, um, delineates the existing fuel modification for those mobile home coaches. So after considering the fuel modification, the only part, um, of the Escha that needed additional analysis is the portion which is highlighted in blue. Um, excuse me, that's, um, highlighted in red. Um, this is the previously mapped, um, area as Escha, um, that isn't included in any fuel modification areas. After additional analysis of this, um, area, um, outlined in red, the city biologist determined that this area does not meet the definition of Escha because it's considered pine woodland, which isn't considered Escha, and doesn't, isn't warranted protection as Escha under the LCP. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides show images of the project site. Um, as you can see from this image, the site is sits on a mesa above PCH and is minimally visible. Uh, this is a view looking southwest towards the project site. Next slide, please. And this is an image looking northeast at the project site from the corner of PCH and Paradise Cove Road. Um, kind of in the foreground, you can see just a portion of the proposed garage. Next slide, please. After the staff report was published for this project, staff became aware that two conditions of approval were inadvertently included in your draft resolution and should be deleted. Um, the first of which is, um, condition of, of approval number ninety, which it requires the recordation of a deed restriction to indemnify the city, um, from hazards related to beachfront or bluff-top development. Um, the site is neither a beachfront or a bluff-top, um, property, and this condition does not apply. Next slide, please. The other condition which should be deleted from your draft resolution prohibits the conversion of the storage area and garage to habitable M-square footage. Um, this condition just simply isn't applicable to the project and should be deleted. Next slide, please. And I believe there is one more condition of approval which should be added to the record regarding, um, the recordation of a covenant easement. Um, and I'll read that into the record now. A covenant of easement pursuant to MMC Section seventeen point four-nine shall be included in a form, uh, in a form and manner approved by the city attorney to provide ingress and egress to the properties located at two-eight one-two-six Pacific Coast Highway and two-eight one-one-eight Pacific Coast Highway as required by CDP eleven dash zero-three-three and APR number eighteen dash zero-zero-nine. And this does incl- conclude my presentation. Um, staff does recommend the planning commission adopt the findings and project conditions as amended in Resolution twenty-two dash zero-seven to approve the subject CDP. Um, this, again, this does conclude my presentation. Uh, in addition to myself and the project team who are available for any questions, the following staff members are also available. Courtney McCammon, who serves as the city biologist, Lauren Doyle, who serves as the city geotechnical reviewer, and Troy Spade, who serves as the assistant public works director. Thank you.
You're muted, Craig.
Oh, and I thank Renika so effusively. Um, thank you, Renika. Uh, commissioners, ex parte disclosures. John?
Uh, yes, I, I, uh, had Renika provide me with the staff report on the Curesco sewer, uh, after the fact approval, including the, um, environmental report and the conclusions of the, uh, resolution as passed. I reviewed those and also, uh, I know the site well. I lived four doors down from it for sixteen years. And that's about it.
Jeff?
Uh, none.
Mark?
Yeah, I met with, uh, the representatives of the applicants, Jamie Harnish and, uh, Joe, who was, uh, part of the, uh, architects team o- on the site last week. And I didn't learn anything new.
Okay, uh, Dennis?
Yes, I met with, uh, Mr. Harnish today. Uh, I didn't learn anything I didn't already know about the project. However, I did get a good history lesson of the area. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, I had conversation, uh, both email and, uh, on the phone with Jamie Harnish. Uh, some questions about the gate, the drainage hydrology, um, location of the easement, and I guess if any of that's relevant, we'll get into the discussion. I don't think I learned anything new. I more or less had questions. Um, oh, I also spoke with Rick Mullin, asked, he's a local resident there, asked him about, uh, the drainage through the tunnel and how that works and, uh, is there much headroom there if, uh, the assumptions of, on this aren't, don't turn out to be exactly accurate. Um, and he seemed to think that the tunnel can accommodate whatever water it's getting through there now and maybe not too much more. So maybe that's, that may or may not be an issue as we discuss things. Um, oh, and then I, I did also have the question about with Jamie and with staff about a- as regards the proof of ownership requirement that we have. And Renika, you just did touch on this about the easements. Um, I had asked the existing easement for the bluff-side parcel whether that was specified to run along the western side of this front parcel or whether it was more general, and it just said you get an easement across our property wherever. And if it was specified, did it need to be changed because we're, we're taking a different route now? And, um, we, I got an email from architect Yoder stating that as of April twentieth, we are still waiting for response and instructions regarding the next steps, uh, after having submitted this to the city attorney for review. So that might be a question for Trevor. Just to clarify, I think maybe Renika got there, but basically they're saying they submitted the easement change to the city. As of the twentieth, they were still waiting for a response from the city attorney. It has, has that aspect been settled now, Trevor?
Yeah, it's going to be dealt with through that condition that was, uh, that was, uh, proposed by Renika for a covenant of easement since it has this common ownership. So there were concerns about, uh, about recording the easements without that. Um, so that, that will take care of it, um, if you guys include that condition with the approval.
Okay, I'll believe you. Um, okay, so where, where are we now? Done disclosures, do, let's open it up for the public comment. We have the applicant team. Uh, I don't know how they, how they want to organize that. Who's taking the lead on that? Like, maybe Jamie wants to weigh in and tell us who wants to speak? I don't see any raised hands.
So from the applicant team, we have Jamie. Hamish, Dan Yoder. There we go.
There's Jamie. Jamie, do you, you, you know the drill. You've got fifteen minutes. You can allocate it however you want, including reserving, uh, some time for rebuttal at the end. Um, what do you, tell us what you'd like to do?
I'll make it quick because, uh, Renika did a very precise presentation. Thank you, Renika. Um, good evening, Chair Hill and commissioners. I am here as the project representative, lot twenty-one LLC. And, um, Dan Yoder is here as the architect. Our civil engineer is also available if there's any civil engineering questions. So we're basically here to respond to questions. And I, I would like to say one thing to enlighten you regarding the easement to the property to the other properties. Please know that fire prevention also requires easements to travel through one property to get to another. So we will be recording the easement in favor of fire prevention for fire suppression as well. Uh, otherwise, I'll save my time for rebuttal. I don't think there's any opposition. We've worked well with all of our immediate neighbors. We've had no complaints. Um, so we will save our time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Um, Rebecca, do we have other, any members of the public interested in speaking?
Unless there's a member of the public who has not yet signed up and is present in the meeting would like to use the raise hand button at the bottom of their screen to indicate an intent to speak. Uh, no one else has signed up for this project.
Okay, if anybody's out there, raise your hand or forever hold your peace.
And seeing none.
Seeing none. Okay. Um, well, in that case, uh, we can close the public hearing and bring you back up to the commission table. Um, commissioners, who, maybe let's start with any sort of technical or questions for staff. Anybody have any outstanding questions about anything? John?
Yeah, as, as I look at the, uh, diagram on page two of eighteen, which Renika had up before, it shows the area of, of Curesha. And I assume the blue area is the, the other blue area is the area that was delineated in the sewer report. And my question would be, the reason why there is no Escha clearance on the mobile homes is, they've been there, well, the lots have been there forever. Uh, I was there in seventy-eight when they all, and forty-three of them right there burned down. But, um, that's prior to, uh, that's right as coastal started, so there is no clearance of the Oak, Oak Woodlands, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Clearance in the way of is fuel modification being performed on the property or? Clearance in the way of is fuel modification being performed on the property or did the previous biological assessment remove the ESHA determination?
Well, my question is, as it stands, they went through a hearing and they didn't, they didn't clear anything. So.
What do you, John, what do you mean by clear?
Well, you have your fire set back, your, your, your 200 feet.
You say that they didn't actually remove the vegetation.
Right. And I'm not asking them to. I'm just asking Renika, that's, you're saying that's within their clearance, that yellow line, but they were never required to do it for some reason. And I didn't get to that report, as you remember, is gigantic. I don't know why, but I assume the reason why, as you were saying, they were existing before coastal or something?
I didn't indicate like the timing of when those mobile homes went, went in next door. I just know that applying the LUP policy that removes the ESHA determination based on the fuel modification required. Now, whether they did the fuel mod or not, I don't know the details about that.
Okay, but this, my real question is, this project, the area between the two yellow lines, nothing's going to be cleared. We're requiring nothing to be cleared. The oak woodland is untouched, correct?
I don't know that to be the case.
Well, there's, there must be a resolution in here that says, when I, this project is for 26116 PCH, and you're, the only area it would be clearing is the area in the red lines. Is that correct?
The area that's outlined in red is the previously mapped ESHA that isn't currently being cleared by fuel modification, or is it required to be cleared by fuel modification for the mobile homes? So whether the, whether the clearance is happening or not, again, I don't know that for sure.
Might be precise. My question is, this project that we're looking at today, any clearance?
You said, does it have, does it have clearance? I'm not understanding your question.
Do do ESHA clearance?
Yes, that's correct.
Where is that?
Okay, that is represented by the blue solid line that, that surrounds the proposed development. Let me pull up the graphic.
Yeah, it might help some people to see the image.
Let's see, that's slide number five. Parker, could you pull that up? Sorry, it took me a minute to get my, wrap my head around your question. Okay, so the blue solid line represents the required fuel modification for the proposed project. Do you see that here?
Yes.
Okay, so most of that area cross overlaps the fuel mod required for the mobile homes. The only portion that is not contained in that existing fuel modification is the area outlined in red.
Okay, so my question would be, since the mobile homes were not required to do the feudal modification, why, why is it this property's requirement?
Because the fire department is.
Well, the fire department exists to the left of the yellow line and to the right of the yellow line.
I don't know what the fire department is requiring for the fuel, for the mobile homes. I don't, I don't know that to be the case. I don't know any details about their required fuel modification.
Okay, but you're talking about number one. Then my second question is, you discussed the pine woodlands in the environmental study and did not study the oak woodlands, which are the yellow line to the left of the yellow line.
So the left of the yellow line didn't warrant any additional analysis because it's included within the required 200-foot fuel modification zone. Now, I understand your concern that the fire department may not be requiring that fuel modification. Again, I haven't talked to the fire department to confirm if they are requiring fuel modification. But from what we understand by the LCP, there's a 200-foot fuel modification for residential structures.
This I understand. But we had a hearing a couple of years ago that put the yellow lines in. Nothing's happened and it was final. So I'm wondering why? And then we do another study that says, oh, this is an oak woodland. It's not an ESHA, we don't have to clear it. But the stuff to the left of the yellow line, that between the two yellow lines is protected species ESHA according to exactly the same, the environmental engineer, whoever did it, same, same company. So I'm wondering what is happening to the protected woodlands?
Aren't any.
Cut all those trees down.
There's no oaks over there.
She's going to do it.
John, one answer would might be that typically the fire department requires full clearance for 100 feet from structures and then out to 200 feet, they want something more sparse and.
Okay, well, we've got two landowners here. Does Jamie's group go over there with chainsaws and clear that? Or does Paradise Cove?
Okay, so I understand that question. It's my understanding that even if the fuel modification for this proposed project, even though that might extend onto the neighboring property, it's my understanding that the fire department will require the neighboring property owner to, to conduct any fuel modification required.
Okay, and do not we need, since it's a protected species forest, it's oaks, okay? There's 136 of them. I read the, the analysis of that property. Do we need anything to say and chop down 130 or say 50 oak trees?
So again, it's my understanding that based on the existing mobile homes, there's already a required fuel modification, whether it's, again, whether it's happening or not. I don't, I didn't talk to the fire department to verify what's happening currently on the Paradise Cove property. All I know is what is required for the proposed project.
I see, I see Courtney's hand up, maybe.
Yeah, I was going to mention that as well.
Courtney, can we open your mic, please? Are you there?
Yes, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, yeah, thank you so much for having me at this hearing. I would just like to point out that I think, as I understand it, the major concern is whether or not these 136 oak trees are going to get cut down at any point. And I would just like to point out that during fuel modification, it's actually a thinning. And so I was present at the property. I viewed that woodland and it looks as if there is some fuel modification happening, which basically just means that there's no branches touching the ground that can start a fire and it is just thinning and it should just be kind of weed whacking of any weeds and there is no cutting of trees or cutting down any trees or there shouldn't be. And I did not observe that occurring.
Can I, can I ask who Courtney is, by the way?
She's a city biologist.
Okay, we had a study done by some, some company that does that stuff and presented it to you, correct?
Yes, so I reviewed this biological assessment that was done. Renika, please correct me if I'm wrong. It was either at the end of 2021 or the beginning of 2022, so it was very recent.
Yeah.
Yes, so I went and visited the site and I went to specifically look at, look at the area that is outlined in red to confirm whether or not that was, in fact, it's a combination of landscaped and a pine woodland. It is disturbed and it was prior, you know, described as an ESHA, but it is no longer described as such. And so I went to go confirm that and, and that was the purpose of my site visit.
Okay, so here's just a question of staff, probably you, Courtney. When we approve this project, is it proper to put in a provision that says only the pine woodland is in the jurisdiction of this property to clear? That the other part of it is the jurisdiction of Paradise Cove? Because what I'm concerned with is there's some kind of ruling on how you do it at Paradise Cove that hasn't been told, other than the fact that apparently in my reading of that staff report, which is giant, there no was, there wasn't any requirement for clearance. What I don't want to see happen is us approve chopping down a bunch of trees because somebody changes their mind. This, as far as I'm concerned, was decided in 2020 or wherever it was when they got their sewer permit, the yellow areas. Is, because you've got two conflicting things and we don't not have evidence on what's going to happen to the woodlands, other than you saying, well, the other guys are going to do it. Well, I want to make sure that, that the other guys do it and Jamie's crew doesn't. Is that something that is a problem with the city?
Renika, did you, I'm not, I'm not quite sure if I can comment on whose jurisdiction that should be. I, I do just want to comment on the fact that in fuel mod zone C, it is just thinning, as I said before. So it should, I just want to reiterate that there should not be any chopping down of trees by either Paradise Cove or 28116 PCH. And then in fact, it should just be a thinning zone in the area that I believe you're concerned with. But I'll leave the jurisdiction to Renika possibly, hopefully.
Yeah, I just want to, that the interior yellow line is actually a foot from the, the mobile homes. So that's where I get the, I get queasy about somebody deciding, some staff member deciding, oh, this particular CDP said whack the trees.
Like Courtney mentioned, there's no cutting down of trees. It is thinning, like she mentioned. And it's my understanding that the fire department has always required fuel modification that extends across a property line to be the responsibility of that particular property owner. I think it happens more often than what Steely's staff is aware of. This issue really only came up because we were looking at the proximity to the stream, which also runs on the property of Paradise Cove and realized that there was some fuel modification that would be required for the proposed project that isn't currently included on the fuel mod plan. The fuel mod plan only stops at the property boundary for the project site, but staff is aware based on the LCP that there's an additional 100-foot of brush clearance typically associated with zone C, which would extend across the property. I hope I made sense, but I tried to describe the fuel modification, but.
Yeah, this is, I wanted to be clear because zone A is 100 feet, right? And zone A in the yellow area is one foot. Okay, so it's not clear on this particular application. You are saying that nobody from 28116 PCH is authorized to clear Paradise Cove property?
I believe the fire department will require the property owners at Paradise Cove to do the brush clearance associated with this proposed project.
Okay, so.
They're not going to force the property owner at 28116 to go next door and do the required zone brush clearance.
Yeah, I think, John, I think, I think this is pretty clear. I get the, the other side of the same question, if I want to insert it here is, and this may be for Richard, but my, I understood that the sewer project, if I recall correctly, required, was required to process a variance in the ESHA and we were not requiring a variance for the ESHA modification here. Is that just because that variance was already required for the sewer, so it doesn't need to happen a second time?
No, it's because I believe, and I was in that hearing, I believe it was required because it was done after the fact and they just let them slide, but.
My understanding on the Paradise Cove project, and if I'm, I think we're talking about the same variance here, is the drainage course on the property. There is, when you look at the city's ESHA maps, there is a stream, and now it's.
Oh, okay, and so that's not, that's not on this property. Okay.
On the Paradise Cove one, yes.
Okay. What they determined on the Paradise Cove property was the stream was underground in that portion.
Correct, but nonetheless, even though it's, it was underground and in a pipe, not a, you know, natural stream as we all think, you know, you could walk down and there's a bank on each side. The fact, even though it was in a pipe, the fact is the, the pipe for the sewage plant crossed perpendicular to that pipe, which was indicated as a stream. And the coastal commission made it clear that even though it was converted, I guess you could say, the fact is it was crossing a blue line stream and a, a variance was required at that point.
Okay, do, do other people have questions?
I just want to make one final thing to make this clear. Nothing we're passing tonight allowing or requiring 28116 to cross their boundary line and start whacking trees.
Nobody's going to do that.
Yeah. Okay, Mark?
Well, the, there are oak trees, right? I mean, aren't they protected anyway? I mean, I don't think you can trump that.
Well, you can, if, if you require it, you can trump it. The fire department can trump anything. But you pay, you pay a big penalty. I, I just want to make sure we're, because we don't have the data in front of us to say whether or not that can happen. So I just want to make sure we're not deciding that it has to happen. That's all I want to know.
Okay, other questions from on this topic or others?
Mr. Harnish has had his hand up for a while.
Oh, yeah. Jamie, have we, I think we may have addressed it or unless you have more enlightenment briefly?
I would like to say that Mark Wetton was, had basically said what I was going to say and Courtney can correct me if I'm wrong, but nobody can go in and tamper with or cut a protected tree such as an oak, toyon, walnut, or sycamore without bio, city biology approval and without an arborist report. So if the fire department's requiring anyone to thin out an oak tree, it needs a permit in review by the city and an arborist. So we're not intending, we're not required to do any thinning of protected trees or habitat, but if anyone is, the city still has to review a protected tree when they're trimmed.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing other hands. I had a few questions that I just wanted to get clarified, so I'd make sure I understood correctly. On the hydrology and the runoff, the storm management stuff, when we look at the root of the driveway where it goes up the hill from near the Ramirez Tunnel, it goes up through a sort of channel where the driveway is the flat bottom and, and there are steep sides on both sides of the driveway as it goes up. So the first question is, when the, in this, we saw the map of the permeable and impermeable areas. When the storm management numbers were calculated, did they just assume that the permeable areas would not contribute to the overall sheet flow? That in other words, that those areas would just go ahead and absorb? Or was there some effort to have some kind of coefficient that says, whatever the number is, 50% of the, the rain that lands on the permeable area nonetheless washes down to the driveway and collects on the driveway and becomes sheet runoff that eventually goes down through the, the tunnel? So I'm, we have the numbers that say, and the storm management says, yes, we're actually coming in at 5% under the current runoff amount. But I just wondered about the assumptions of what are we actually measuring?
So I did have a conversation with the public works department and I believe, like I mentioned, Troy Spade is also here to ask any engineering questions. But from what I gathered from our discussion earlier today is that the site's permeability does not affect the quantity of runoff. It essentially is a, is a, a function of ensuring water quality. So again, the permeability doesn't change the amount of runoff. It affects the. It affects um, the quality. It filters out impurities, basically.
So when we're talking about a, a, a strong storm, the assumption then is that water runs off from everywhere. And that any, any amount of actual permeation, if that's a word, is, is negligible. That we're counting the water coming from everywhere. Troy, I see you there. Is that, is that more or less correct?
Yeah, when you have a strong storm, your, your permeable areas are going to be saturated. So the assumption isn't, is not that uh, there's water permeating through the soil at that point. The saturation has already occurred, so um, the, the water quality measures are really for lower flow storms. The water quantity that yours, that you mentioned has, it has been reduced from a pre and a post condition. So the, the, the current uh, stormwater volume running off the site is more than what the post-construction. Uh, will be based on measures that they put in place, not necessarily um, permeable soils. But just ways to capture the water.
So likewise, that the area of permeability, the permeable area at the bottom of the driveway. Before you even get up to the gate, that, we're, we're not assuming that's absorbing anything. That all this stormwater coming down the driveway continues down into the tunnel and we're all good on that.
Correct, we're not assuming that that is absorbing, and right now, the, the project is still under review in, in plan check. So some of those items are still being worked out and uh, you know, I know Jamie had mentioned that the civil engineer is, is on. Uh, or is available, but um, we've, we've made some comments to the stormwater management plan. And are looking for some, some new data on that, but uh, your, your assumptions are correct.
Okay, uh, Dennis, you wanted to add to that or?
Well, I just going to say, number one, that driveway's been there for, forever. And number two, as Assistant Director Spade has just said, these are directed flows. So it's not like water just flows everywhere. They're directed, so they, they go into inverts, they go into pipes. They go into areas that are approved that Public Works and the Civil Engineer has designed to do.
Yeah, well, the driveway is going to be wider than it was, so that's part of my concern. John?
Still been there.
Okay, uh, this question for the little engineer, uh. We at the, that's, that stream, the city put in a two million dollar cleanup plant. The, that is directly on that stream. And, and it, it comes through the tunnel into a covert into the stream. Does this, and that's a critical stream because it's going into a zero T N B L. Water, water area uh, on the ocean, right there at the pier. Uh, that's where it starts. It does the city water treatment plant. Has it been evaluated upon the, about the capacity to, to clean the water that comes off this property?
Is that, John, is that question for me or the civil engineer from the?
However, charge of the uh, I guess, the, the city, so we just, so water runoff plant at, uh, next to the pier.
Yeah, a, as I stated a minute ago, the project is still under plan check review, so some of that is still being reviewed.
Okay, but uh, you're saying that at some point, since it's a zero T, T N B L runoff. Somebody's going to decide that this doesn't add any T N B Ls.
Yes, and that may in fact already, already be part of the analysis. I can tell you that the, the quality, the, the quantity of runoff is already reduced. The quality has to be reduced, it's just a, a, a nature of the uh, of the project. With the M S four, they, they have to prove that they're, they're reducing pollutants. So before the water ever leaves the site, that's going to have to be um, part of the, the calculus.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, John, uh, anybody else? I have a couple more things.
I have just one other thing, and that is the gate.
Mine, okay.
You want to do it? Go for it.
Well, just a broad, a, a general question that there's the gate and the wall, and we just need some clarification because. Nominally, a gate should not be higher than forty-two inches solid and then permeable up to six feet. Uh, we have a six-foot solid gate spec, and then we have walls of six feet, eight inches spec. And one question I had on that was, we have a code section saying that. Um, where is it? Anything over? I don't have it on my notes here now, there's, I cited it in an email. Um, basically, anything over half an acre residential, the fencing has to be view permeable. And I know, Renika, you replied back, I don't think it's more than half an acre, but the site itself is an acre, so give or take, so.
Right, um, the code section that um, you were asking about, well, when you, when it mentioned enclosure. Um, I believe that code section applies if more than half an acre is enclosed. And I don't believe more than half an acre of this site is going to be enclosed by a fence.
Isn't the, doesn't the wall go pretty much around the site?
The vehicle entry gate just goes across the driveway at the point of entrance.
And then there's wall that goes all up around by Paradise Cove, right?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to enclose the entire site. Maybe Jamie or Dan could provide some additional um, feedback on that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wanting to square the circle because it then, and then I guess part of the thought was. I think you were suggesting that this doesn't have to comport with the uh, forty-two inch height limit. On the front side of a property in the front yard because it's set back. That, that was the, the uh, I, I see thumbs up there from Dennis. Um, Dan, do you want to weigh in on the, the wall and the, the gate and just help me clarify this? Dan Yoder is, I see his hand. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, the, the primary uh, wall that you're referring to uh, along the west side. Um, running along Paradise Cove that wraps around to the north and then stops at the gate. So there's no wall uh, across the north of the property, uh, the south of the property.
Okay, so John, well, so doesn't, doesn't that still mean it needs to be limited to six foot height?
Not in the setback, you get a percentage when you move the gate back. When you move it back like twenty-two percent, which this is, you can up to, up to height of the gate.
Okay, John?
Well, first, uh, Renika, is the gate in the side yard, I mean, the front yard setback or no?
It is not because the project includes a minor modification to reduce the required front yard setback.
The gate itself is not in the front yard setback.
Not with the minor modification approval, it isn't.
I would assume there's a fence on the east side of the property. You're not just open to the next door neighbor.
Um, Dan, do you have any comment on that? I don't think so. I don't, I don't recall seeing a wall or gate on the um, eastern property line.
Chain link fence.
Yeah, that's a fence. It's called a fence.
But it's already there.
And doesn't, it doesn't enclose the property.
But it's nothing new.
Uh, you, you cannot enclose a property.
What do you mean?
You can't take a property that's got three quarters of property fenced and say, that doesn't count because it's already there and fence the rest of it. That's the way the code reads.
The code says if you're enclosing it, it has to be view permeable. Uh, actually view permeable. I, I, I don't know, the wildlife is from a different section somewhere. I don't know. Uh, um, let's, let's hear from Dan and then we'll go over to Mark. Dan, what, can you clarify again?
Yes, um, there's uh, the existing chain link across the east side of the property. But again, a majority of the north, uh, no fence and the south, no fence or wall.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Well, just a comment that if it's a chain link, it's view permeable.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, then typically they're six feet, so I, I don't know why we would worry about it.
Or we're wondering about the other part.
He just told you, Mister Yoder just told you.
Yeah, so there's no fence on the north or the south, so it's not enclosed. I think that's the answer there.
Yeah, a question on that. These properties are not joined in any way, except for the easement to drive across. Is that right?
You mean, that's a legal question, I guess maybe for Trevor. There's no, there's no linkage, no.
Was it was all the same property because the whole property is enclosed?
There are three separate parcels.
Okay.
Yeah, um, let's see, I will, just for the record, I will, it, it's moot in this particular case. Uh, but on the T D S F, I'll renew my objections to the way that the less than six foot areas, developed areas are not counted as developed area. Uh, i- in this case, it's immaterial because they're still way below the T D S F limit, but I just wanted to not leave that uh. Loose thread. And then finally, I, I, this is in a um, known vicinity of Chumash Settlement. And we're talking about digging some basements here, so I would like to put in a condition requiring the onsite professional monitor. For all excavation.
And I, I'd like to comment on that, uh, in nineteen, I'm guessing seventy-nine. I did find a remnants of a beaded necklace on the highway within a hundred feet of there.
On the highway?
On the shoulder, believe it or not. Got it. It's just a bunch of beads, but it was just sitting there with dirt all over it, yeah. So there are, there were showmanship hanging around. It's a nice spot.
Yeah, so um, I think in the circumstances, that's, that's, I think that's the appropriate thing to do here. And, and the precedent has been to do that all around, and I think we actually did that on the front property. Uh, the one one six address.
Um, Commissioner Hill, did you want to quantify uh, the amount of excavation that requires monitoring or do you?
Well, when we've done this before in the, in the sensitive areas, the few spots on, at the edge of Point Doom and here at Paradise Cove that. And I guess maybe we did it around Malibu Creek too. We just said when they're doing any excavating, that, 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 that they be there, or we could, you could just say when we're excavating the basements. If that makes a difference, because that's, that's where you're going to find any traces, that you'll find them at some depth, probably like, you know, at least three feet down, probably. No, I'm saying.
Three feet, you guys, you got no more than three feet.
Dennis, I, I'm saying exactly the opposite. I'm saying you're not likely to find something until you go at least three feet.
I can't imagine them digging deeper than three feet. That, that just didn't happen. It just, that's not how that went. I've dealt with this my whole career. It doesn't, they don't dig twelve feet, ten feet. That is not what they did in, in their tribes and being along the edge like that. No way.
But you're assuming that that's natural grade in the area and subdivided and graded.
And, 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 and there's been habitation there known for at least ten thousand years and very likely longer. So the, the terrain can change a lot in ten thousand years plus. Uh, John, your hand is up, are you?
Oh, no, I, I didn't mean that.
Okay, well, um.
I would like to make a motion to approve the project with the. Uh, I believe Renika had three things she wanted to have in there.
To remove and one to put in.
And uh, that um, we require uh, a. Archaeological or uh, monitor on digging of the basements.
Professional archaeological monitor.
Yeah, on the digging of the basements.
Sure, do we have that, that, that condition, the standard condition?
The standard is, is that they stop work, right? But we're talking about the sort of the deluxe condition.
Which condition are we talking about? Which numbered condition in the proposed order are we talking about changing?
Yeah. Could just be adding.
Do we have the standard condition? I just want to know which one it is.
Yeah.
I assume we have it.
I think, Renika, I think if I understand correctly, I think it's condition twelve. That uh, Chair Hill is asking to be changed from something, you know. I think remove that and put in our language that during earth moving activities and monitors required. Rather than waiting for if, is that correct? It would be twelve that he'd like to remove and.
That, that's correct, that's correct.
Believe so. I was just looking for another condition that we've added to other projects, just to read it into the record. But yeah, that's correct. That's the condition we'll be updating.
Um, I know we've done it the same exact way multiple times on other sensitive spots. So I think you could, we could just, I think we can rely and say that's the language we want to use one more time.
And Renika, would you give your other provisions so we can just make it part of the motion?
Yeah, can we, can we pull that up? It's, because there's a few different versions of this that have been used.
Okay, let me see what I can find.
Okay, but the, the uh, the motion is her staff's recommendation, including the change of suggestion by. Miss Brooks during her presentation and then with um, altering the, the uh, excavation condition. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Jamie has his hand up, uh, if we're adding new conditions that, that the applicant hasn't been advised of. I think it's fairness to give them a chance to respond.
Yeah, let's, let's hear from Rebecca first, actually. Rebecca, what, what's your concern?
Um, I was just going to note that on three twenty-one, the commission um, approved planning commission resolution twenty-two nineteen. As amended to adding, adding a condition to state, a qualified archaeologist must be present at the site to monitor all site excavation.
There you go.
And then prior to the issuance of any development permit, the property owners or applicant must provide evidence. That an archaeologist has been contracted to perform the required monitoring. After monitoring is concluded, the qualified archaeologist is required to provide a summary in writing describing the monitoring findings.
Excellent, thank you. Jamie, are uh, you, what's your take on this?
Um, I understand what you're trying to do and I don't disagree. In fact, I believe in preserving all cultural heritage. Um, this property's been developed since probably the sixties. It's been graded, it's been retaining wall. However, um, in the spirit of cooperation, we will agree to having a monitor on site per the condition, which is during excavation activities.
Great, thank you, yeah. I, 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 I think despite the development it's had, the, the introduction to the basements is a, is a new, new layer. Literally and figuratively.
And I agree with that. I agree with the language just read.
Okay, so now, we had a motion in a second.
Oh, we, we need Renika to tell what the other three things she wanted to change for.
Yes, it was the.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, it was the removal of condition number ninety, which is a indemnification. Um, that's applied to beachfront and bluff top development. Um, this project is neither of those. And then there was um, a condition number ninety-three, which would also be deleted. Um, that prohibits the conversion of the garage and storage areas to habitable square footage. That would also be deleted.
Okay, but this will be subject to wave action in about three hundred years, right?
Not this one, but wasn't there a third one?
There, there was a third.
There was a third one. I can read that again into the record if you would like. Um, it's regarding the recreation of a covenant.
The covenant of easement.
Yeah, should I reread that into the record?
It's, it was, that's, that's the intention. Uh, we're just referencing it here. You did uh, read.
You read it already, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll accept all three of those and that's my motion, or all four of those.
Yeah, so the, the motion is staff's recommendation with the removal of the two conditions. Um, that Miss Brooks, Brooks stated, and also the addition of the covenant of easement. Um, condition that she um, added, that she presented during her presentation. And then the, the removal of condition twelve, uh, to be replaced by the two conditions that Miss Evans read into the record. Is that accurate?
Well, you have the archaeo, the archaeology.
Yeah, those were the ones from Miss Evans.
Okay, that's it.
And who is the second on this? Do we have a second? There's no second? How, how come we're talking about, Mark, did you second this?
I did not.
Oh, well, I'll second it. We, if we want to put it to vote. Right, so we have it.
The motion second, you can ask for the.
All right, let's, let's call the roll then, please.
Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Chair Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
No, because I feel that they should only be able to go down about three feet and, and check their stuff. Otherwise, you'll, you, you could, it's, it's bad. I'm okay with all their history, that's fine. That's part of our area, I guess, but uh. Um, I'm, I'm not happy about that because it could get out of hand. And you could chase that stuff because you think you saw something? No.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dennis. Um, and with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourned.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Chair Hill.
Yes, thank you, Jamie. Thanks, Jamie and everybody else. Thank you, uh, Commissioner's staff. See you next time. See you live and in person next time.
Person, yes.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night.